This is an open meeting. Posted right around the corner as you walk in, the door is the actual Open Meeting Act. If you would, we're going to ask that you stand with us for just a moment of silence and as well, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beth will continue with roll call. Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Claussen.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
File.
Here.
All right. And under action items here, I would request a motion for approval of the consent agenda as provided you.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second? Please vote. All councilmen present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries. And as well, looking for approval of the full agenda.
Move, Your Honor.
Motion with a second to approve the full agenda again. Please vote. All councilmembers present voting in the affirmative. Okay. Under special presentations tonight, we have one presentation, a proclamation for Spay Day USA. Whereas cats and dogs provide companionship and share the homes of hundreds of individuals in the Norfolk and surrounding areas, and whereas the problem of pet overpopulation is a reason for the cost of animal control and animal pound expense for Norfolk taxpayers, and whereas animal pounds and shelters throughout the country must euthanize approximately 4 million cats and dogs each year, although many of them are healthy and adoptable due to the lack of critical resources such as money, space, and good adoptive homes, and whereas spaying and neutering cats and dogs, among the other animal companions, has shown to be drastically reduced pet overpopulation, and veterinarians, national and local animal welfare organizations, and private citizens have joined together again this year to advocate and to support spaying and neutering companion animals on Spay Day USA 2016. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Sue Fuchman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim February 23rd, 2016, as Spay Day USA in the City of Norfolk and the surrounding area, and urge citizens to please observe this day by having their own cats or dogs spayed or neutered, or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of another person's cat or dog, or a homeless cat or dog. Is there someone in the audience that will receive this proclamation and take it back? Want to come forward?
You want me to come up?
Sure, please. We will ask you to come forward, state your name for us, sign in, and maybe just give a little bit of introduction of yourself and why you're here.
And I'm sorry, I'm hearing impaired. Did you say to sign this as well?
If you would, please.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for declaring the 23rd as Spay Day. My name is Andrea Linder, and I'm the corporate contact for Heartland Animal Advocates of Norfolk. And we've been in existence for about 15 or 16 years, and we, or I guess I have taken pictures of homeless animals for the paper for about 22 years. And we try to help other organizations in the area with their goals, try to take pictures of their animals, and distribute those for adoption efforts. There are about, at this time, there are about five organizations in Norfolk that are dedicated to animal welfare, and all of them do support spaying and neutering as a primary means by which to reduce pet overpopulation. And Spay Day is a national and worldwide event, and it was originated by the Doris Day Animal Institute and the animal, excuse me, the Animal League. And it started as Spay Day USA in 1995. And then, when the Doris Day Animal League merged with the Humane Society of the United States, the Humane Society has taken over primary responsibility for coordinating this holiday, this event. We are, we're very much Heartland Animal Advocates, as the other organizations in Norfolk are, very dedicated to the Spay Day cause, and want to thank you very much again for declaring the day of the 23rd as Spay Day, Spay Day USA. Thank you.
Andrea, I'll give you the proclamation to take back with you, and our thanks for the work that you do with this project. So, thank you for coming. Okay. We will move on then to, first, we were looking for consideration of Resolution 2016-5 that is related to the appeal of the amendments to the conditional use permit of Off-Road Ranch. The first thing we need to do is, if you remember right at the meeting last week after the public hearing, we actually tabled the item and asked for further effort on behalf of the staff. So if I could, I would look for a motion to take it off of the table.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. I would ask you to vote. All councilmembers present voting in the affirmative. All right. And so then we're going to look for resolution, consideration of, to 2016-5 with a motion to adopt either A, B, or C, if you remember right. A being reverse, B being affirm, or C, the modification that was included in your packet. If you want, I think it would be probably wise to have Clint run over what the changes were, so that we're all in complete understanding here. Probably need a motion though, don't I, for the consideration of?
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration Resolution 2016-5.
Second.
A, B, or C. An A, B, or C. No, you got to choose. Oh, you had to choose one. You want to discuss all of them?
Modify, modify, or?
I see.
Or affirm, reverse, or reverse is A, B is affirm, and C is modify.
Well, then, let's start with A.
Okay. Okay, so you're putting a motion on the floor now.
If we have to put a motion on the floor, I would start with A and get a...
Or do you want me to explain all of the...
Well, I would rather we explained it all, A, B, and C, right now, rather, but as I understood it, we needed a motion first.
Yeah. The way I understood it too. We need a motion that we open for discussion. How's that? Is that agreeable? Okay.
I will make a motion that we open for discussion, Resolution 2016-5.
Second.
All right.
Want me to address it?
Please.
After they vote.
We need to vote? Okay. We need you to vote. All councilmembers voting in the affirmative. All right. We all want to hear from you.
Well, very briefly, there are three versions for the council to consider. Version, and all of these are comparing this to Resolution 20-16-2 of the Planning Commission. So we're comparing these all to the action that was taken by the Planning Commission early in January, and then which was appealed to you with the public hearing the last time you met here before this item was tabled. If you determine that you move forward version A of the resolution, that would reverse the, that would reverse the actions of the Planning Commission and would leave the, would leave the, would not make any amendments to the, to the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit would instead go back to the way it was.
Right.
After it was appealed to this board, and when the City Council passed Resolution 20- or 2014-43 about a year and three or four months ago, that would be the way it would be. So it'd be just like the application had not been made by Off-Road Ranch for the amendment.
I'll understand that one.
Okay.
Okay.
If you choose version B to consider, that would embrace the modifications that were made by the Planning Commission in Resolution 20-16-2. And so that information's in the packet. That was basically the subject of the, of the item, the public hearing a month ago, or a week, or two weeks ago.
Right.
Version C, I think we got a little direction. I think that Councilman Fauss had some, some direction in the motion that he made when, before this was tabled. And so version C, the way it is prepared, does really three things. You'll remember, there were three items which were part of the proposed modifications. One of those had to do with creating a rain day or a holiday day on Sunday. That's been removed, and so version C, the way it's reflected before you right now, takes that away, takes that out of, it modify, this would modify the, what the Planning Commission did to remove the Sunday option altogether. The second thing that it does, is it, it changes some of the language related to the, what were the super late model races? You'll remember that there had been one. There was language added based upon, to, to, to provide for two additional special nights of racing. What we've done here is, based on the benefit of the discussion that was had at the public hearing, we've basically put in here, and I'll just read what it, what it says about that. It would modify it, would modify both what the council did back when it was last before you in 2014, and what the Planning Commission did in January, and it would read as follows. "There may be a total of three nights per racing season where special races replacing one of the regular classes of races may be held. Special races are races where this race, where the race cars may be operated without mufflers is required in item number six of this resolution and permit. These special races may include, but are not limited to, super late model races or sprint cars." So those are therefore, as a way of examples. The, the other item that you recall had to do with, the third item had to do with an emergency access, and so it, it has a modification that said, "Access to stock car racetrack should be off of Grandview Drive. In the case of an emergency, use of the northern property gate onto Old Highway 8 was, shall be allowed. A sign prohibiting a left turn onto Old Highway 8 shall be displayed on race nights whenever the emergency access onto Old Highway 8 is being utilized." So those are basically the changes that would come forward if you were to approve version C, which, with those modifications. And I hope that we accurately reflected what you were wanting last, last time. Hope we read the tea leaves correctly.
Thanks, Clint. Counsel, any discussion? Probably much. Any questions on that third change with the understanding that we sent him away with from two weeks ago?
I have a question about the turning left, or, yeah, turn left only. What is the issue we have?
Turn right only.
Or turn right only, can't turn left, yeah. What is the issue of going right?
What the testimony was, you know, was that, I think they felt that if they turned left on Old Highway 8 during the emergency, there would be a bottleneck of traffic all at one time during the emergency. That would bottleneck at the stop sign and Channel Road as it come together, and then all that traffic would go up and down Channel Road at one big shot, and the neighborhood apparently had some concerns about that. That's what I understood Ms. Rocky to say about that.
I think turning left takes them right back to the main entrance flow, is what they're trying to say.
They want flow to go... Exactly. Flow to go two ways. Channel Road...
If they take them right, it goes away from the flow. If they turn them left, they turn them right back into the same main exit flow. I think that's what they're trying to get away from.
Now, I would tell you, I mean, human nature tells me, and from a public safety standpoint, that chances are during an emergency, whether it be a weather event or otherwise, people are probably going to exit where they entered, where they, where they came in for the most part, until there's a bottleneck there, and then they're going to take the, the path of least resistance, which in my mind would be turning right anyway. But as it gets congested, most people, human nature says, "I'm going the way it's not congested," so, but that was the concern, I think, that was articulated here two weeks ago by Ms. Rocky.
And I remember those discussions, and that, and it was a little bit lengthy and to the point of whether it was prohibiting or suggesting, and the way it's noted in here is that it's a prohibition of left-hand turn, whereas I, the, the operator or owner down there was, you know, somewhat leery about that, but was going to do whatever I guess we suggested that way, so.
Sure, please.
Couple of things. We had further discussion, Councilman, after, after we had our directions from a couple of weeks ago. One of the things, the reason that it was written, the, the way that we put it in here for your consideration, at least initially, was that this would not have the effect of law. It would really be a suggestion. You would have a sign, and we wrote it this way, that it would be a sign prohibiting it. I think it was Dennis that suggested, you can go out and can buy a sign that says, "No left turn." You could, you, you know, those signs are readily available, and so that would be a sign that could be displayed there on the date when, when the emergency access might be used at, in conjunction with the races. Our understanding was that that exit might be utilized at other times when there aren't race nights, and so that's why we only said in here that should be displayed at the time that, when, when it was utilized in conjunction with, with race nights. But at the end, when you make your way through all of that, it really is a suggestion without the effect of law. I don't think anybody could kick it if they turned left under, under, under this if, if it was approved the way it was written here.
Are you still puzzled, Shane? Trying to, okay.
I think in the scope of things, how many emergencies you actually have.
Exactly.
How we're making a mountain out of a molehill here.
But it needed to be addressed because there was concern expressed, so, and I think this was certainly what we felt was going to take care of their concern, so. Any other discussion or questions or comments? Okay, then, we have a motion on the floor. Now, do we need to...
No, we don't have a motion.
What?
You need, you need, I believe what you need to do with your discussion is to, is to advance version A, B, or C.
Your Honor, I would like to introduce version C.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the advancement of version C. Are you ready to vote? Please do. Voting in favor of Resolution 2016-5 version C, Councilmembers Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Claussen, Muren, Fauss. Voting against version C, Councilmember File. Councilman Moaning absent. Motion carries. Thank you, staff, for the work done on that. I think we got to the point of resolution here. So we're going to move on to public hearing to discuss the 2016 21 and six-year plan, one and six-year improvement plan. So if I could, I'd have a motion to open this public hearing.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we will listen to Dennis.
Okay. Back for our annual one and six-year street plan. First item is $650,000 of miscellaneous street contract work, whether that be panel replacements, maybe some overlays, armor coat, cracked ceiling, any of those types of things would fall under that type of a project. The next project, which is number three on your list, is the paving of, repaving of 8th Street from Michigan Avenue to Omaha Avenue. Going to try to upgrade that street, get some curbs and gutters on there, improve drainage. It will include an outlet over to Corporation Gulch to help some of the drainage down there. Number four is the city's share of bonds for special assessment districts, intersections, oversized pipe, oversized streets. The next project in the one-year plan is number eight, which is continued funding for the replacement of the bridge on Norfolk Avenue at Cottonwood. That project also includes reconstruction of Norfolk Avenue from First Street to basically Cottonwood. Those are the projects that are in the one-year projects. One project that was getting close last year that I pushed back a little bit was the reconstruction of Roch Avenue from First to Fifth Street. We're hoping that maybe there'll be some community revitalization funding that will be available for that project. DED is in the process of reviewing the community revitalization project, and so it's going to be a couple of years before any funding will be available from that project source. So that project was moved back a couple of years. And then the big project that was added to the one and six-year plan this year was the reconstruction of Norfolk Avenue from Cottonwood to the flood control. So with that, I would take any questions that you may have. Also, if you've got any other projects that should be considered in future years, let me know, and I'll take a look at them as well, so.
Counsel? Any comments, questions, concerns? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to address anything that has been shared with us tonight? If not, then I will close this public hearing. If no further discussion from the council, Beth, do we have a Planning Commission report?
Yes.
Do you want me to read it for you?
I'll struggle through it. The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the City of Norfolk 2016-2021 One and Six-Year Street Improvement Plan on February 9th, 2016, and approved, recommended approval on a nine-to-zero vote.
Okay. With the hearing closed then, I'm looking for consideration of approval of Resolution 2016-6, approving the 2016 through 2021 One and Six-Year Plan for Street Improvements.
Who makes the motion, Your Honor?
Second.
A motion with a second? If no further discussion, please vote. All councilmembers present voting in affirmative. Resolution 2016-6 is adopted. Next is consideration of approval of Ordinance Number 5377, amending Section 24-164 of the Official City Code to restrict parking on the south side of McKinley Avenue. Ordinance Number 5377, it passed on the first reading at the February 1st, 2016 City Council meeting. So with that, I'm looking for a motion on second reading of, of Ordinance 5377.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration Ordinance Number 5377 on second reading.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Ready to vote? Do you want discussion on this? Okay.
Your Honor, I have, I've talked with Dennis about this. I've had a lot of calls from the public, and if they read what he's got, they, he has got available parking in other places. If everybody kind of goes in order, we'll have as much parking, if not more, than we had, but they have to go in order, and he's also looking at other ways of doing this. So I just wanted to make that comment, that we're not eliminating spaces. We're eliminating them from the ditch in that street, but if everybody cooperates, there'll be more parking in the parking lot. So I just want them to be aware of that, and that if they look at the map that he has made up, it shows that on there.
Great. Good comments, and certainly that was included in the packet, so for any of you out there that may want to take a look at it, it is available for you, so.
You know, as you, as you know, you've been out there, obviously, at Evening Solvay, and that is slam-packed all the way through there during softball and baseball season. So by eliminating all the parking down McKinley, which is, I don't know how many linear foot of that is, and how many parking stalls that is, we're still getting the same amount. You know, I see the, the base, the youth baseball has 160 stalls available, but, you know, if you take away 40 going down that road there, we're, we're anticipating that those will, still, we're going to pick those up in those 120 stalls. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Yeah. And primarily, I don't think that, on the north side, that we were getting six rows of, six rows of parking in there. I think we were getting four rows of parking in there. Same way with the one at the, the adult softball complex. We've got one, two, three, four rows of parking in the parking lot. We were getting three at best previously, and we're, this park staff's supposed to be putting in some delineators that kind of show where the folks need. There's some posts or some, something so that you can see that you pull up...
Because I'm not going to lie to you. I'm going to hold you to that, because I brought this up to my wife the other night, and she said, "Are you crazy?" And I said, "What?" You know, so.
We, we were looking at that.
This is right, because we're working, moving forward on this. It's a, it's a big deal to parents who are dropping off five and six-year-olds, expecting them to get there, then running back with their other ones, and then trying to get back up to the ballgame, you know, especially in that youth area.
I agree with you, Shane. I'm out there a lot for softball, and without that ditch there, there's a lot of parking that is going to be lost. But I've also watched for years, the first people to get there, if they park crooked, they do lose a whole row of parking. So if they can make it so you park in the right spots, I think we'll be okay. If they can't accomplish that, you're going to be right. Your wife is going to be right. We are crazy, so.
Okay.
Hopefully, everybody will start watching where they're supposed to park, and it'll work, but if they don't, we're in trouble, so.
Well, I suggest that you two get out there first and start leading.
With a flag?
No?
You'll be us and a couple of councilmen. We'll get run over.
There is, there is. One of the things that is a big positive on here, though, is the elimination of parking around that, when you go from the north and south parking lot, from where the concessions are in the youth baseball area, that was always kind of a concern for people there because the kids dart out into that crosswalk, and you can't see, especially if you're parked to the east of it, you know. So that's, that was a smart move to do that, that really, I think that's going to improve the safety there, and with the amount of kids that are running around, you know, I think it's not, that's a good thing, but. Dennis, what are we doing to create those 120 stalls on the north side to improve how people are parking over there? By the best, by the youth baseball fields?
I'm not sure whether Pat's going to put poles in the parking lot so you can't just willy-nilly park, drive through it. You're going to pull up against a pole, or whether he's going to have a post with a chain, but something of that nature, so that these parking stalls, well, you'll have to pull into them and back out. You're not going to, it's not going to be drive-through, and you won't be able to drive catty-cornered across the parking lot like you can now. So it's just going to put some order to the, to the parking lot, and without concrete that you can put stripes on, that's the best you can do, is you just have to create the, the travel lanes and then the parking on either side of the travel lanes, so.
I think part of the problem was the gravel's so thick there, you'd have a hard time maneuvering in there, and I know Shane mentioned that they would take care of that, too, so. Right, yeah. We talked it over with staff. Staff's going to lower that level so it's easier to...
Push them up in a pile until it gets worked in and then put it back out, so.
Very good. Any other discussion? Okay. So we have a motion with a second, and short title, do we need to have you? Sorry, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-164 of the Official City Code to restrict parking on the south side of McKinley Avenue from the east city limits to the west end of McKinley Avenue, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. With that, I would ask you to vote. All councilmembers present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5377 carries on second reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5377 on third reading.
Second.
Motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on final third reading. Ordinance 5377. Ready to vote? Ready to vote? Please do.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5377 carries on third reading.
All right. Next is consideration of approval of the proposal submitted by the Norfolk Housing Development Corporation for the purchase and the development of city-owned property on Oak Street.
Your Honor, at this time, I will be abstaining from Number 23 through 26 on the regular agenda. I have a conflict of interest, because I'm the VP on the housing board.
Appreciate that.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
We have a motion with a second. Looks like we have a couple gentlemen up here to, to give us some discussion and tell us exactly what's on here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Higginbotham signing in. I'll give you a brief history and update of what's taken place thus far, and what you're going to be talking about and voting on tonight. If you remember correctly, on November 2nd, is when we, I first came and talked to you about an RFP request for proposal for the sale of the property on the 700-800 block of Oak Street, which would be just slightly east of the 700-800 block of First Street. November 3rd, after you approved that, we sent that out November 3rd to the Norfolk Area Realtors, to their, to their office. November 5th, November 19th, excuse me, November 5th, November 12th, and November 19th, it was advertised in the Norfolk Daily News. November 13th, it was actually tweeted out by Diane, our communications director. It was posted in the lobby at the Administration Building in Permits and Codes, this same RFP that we talked about that day. And we had, I think Val and I talked during that time to roughly 15 to 20 individuals or people that had interest in it, whether it be from phone call, email, or drop-in. So there, there was some, some interest into it. Had the bid opening on the 25th of November, a few weeks after, after the advertising time. And to my surprise, and kind of disappointment, we only had two, two offers. One, that you're going to hear from tonight, and another one from Wayne. So following that, we had a staff meeting, and a subcommittee meeting around January 18th, and here we are tonight. Is there any questions about the process so far?
We've bid similar, similar items before?
Sale of property, you mean? Perhaps we might consider the council chambers' sale similar.
Okay. And I think there's some property up on the, up on Seventh Street, I think we did. I guess my question really is.
I mean, years and years ago, you mean?
Well, the question, the question is, did we do anything different on this bid than we do on others? Did we follow the same protocols?
I, I wasn't here, I don't know about that other one. I'm not sure what else I could have done, or we could have done, to advertise it further than what we did.
Certainly sounds like it got out there a lot.
It, in my opinion, it was put out there pretty, pretty well.
It absolutely, we followed a similar process, Councilman, absolutely did. This one was, was a little bit unique, because we're doing an RFP, we did an RFP for housing development, in essence, really, and we wanted to see what the building community would possibly do with these parts of the ground that the city owned. So in that, in that circumstances, it was relatively unique, you know, and in light of the housing shortages that we are facing in our community now and into the future, we really wanted to put forward a product that, we had these lots available, we wanted to move them, we wanted balancing, and trying to get money back from, seeing what we could get for money back from our investment as a community, from the city's perspective, and then to maximize our housing development opportunity in these, on these five lots. So from that perspective, it's, I'd say it's relatively unique, but as far as the process of getting it advertised and getting it out in front of the interested parties and the citizens is very similar to what we've done in the past.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Higginbotham, I am the President of the Housing Development Corporation, which is the 501(c)(3) arm of the Norfolk Housing Agency, which I serve as the Board Chairman. Obviously, the housing agency, we do housing activities. Typically, we do rental assistance, housing vouchers, those kinds of things. We also partner with the City of Norfolk on housing rehabilitation activities. And, and long before my time, maybe some of you folks remember the Meadowridge Apartment Development over there on Benjamin. Well, the Housing Development Corporation was, was part of that project back in the early 90s, and if there's any questions that I cannot answer, we've got Gary Hockman, our executive director here, to answer those questions. So we have been involved in, in housing over the years. We have some, we, we received some program income off of that Meadowridge Housing Development from the early 90s, sitting in the Development Corporation, and with, you know, the housing needs of Norfolk, you know, there's been a housing task force, which Gary was part of, and his predecessor Sheila Miller, they were served on that task force, so they were part of the process of, of understanding the housing needs. And so really, what we're looking at doing here is, you know, trying to do our part and to help Norfolk, you know, serve its housing needs. Now, we do serve, you know, the low to moderate income families, and what I mean by that are the folks that we help are at or below 80% of the area median income. And if any of you are interested in what those numbers are, I'll just kind of give you a quick range. You know, a, a one household family is $34,650. A family of four is $49,450. A family of eight is $65,300. So those are the kind of, the kind of families that we assist. So what we really wanted to do is, we saw this proposal come out, we did some looking around, we did our due diligence, had the staff take a look at it, and, and basically put a proposal in to purchase these lots for, for roughly what the city has invested in, in them when they acquired them 10-plus years ago. And, and obviously, and our proposal was to defer payment on those lots until we sell the homes. So if there's any questions about our proposal that I can answer, I'll be more than happy to do that, so.
Appreciate that, Tom. So what we're first considering is actually approval of the proposal that's been submitted, which is the motion on the floor. Are we good with discussion there and the understanding, so that we're able to do, to vote on that? I would ask that you do vote then, please.
All council members present voting in affirmative. Councilmember Muiran abstaining, councilmember Moaning absent, motion carries.
Okay, then next would be consideration of approval of a real estate purchase agreement between the City and Norfolk Housing Development Corporation, providing for the purchase of property located in the 700-800 block of Oak Street. Again, I need consideration of.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor, for consideration.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion on this? I believe what we've heard from Tom certainly has given us explanation, unless there's further questions any of you have. Okay? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Councilmember Muiran abstaining, councilmember Moaning absent, motion carries.
All right. Next, we'll look at consideration of approval of Ordinance Number 5378, providing for the sale of the property located in the 700-800 block of Oak Street to Norfolk Housing Development Corporation, for the purchase price of $87,500, with payment being deferred until housing units have been constructed on the property and sold to income-qualified home buyers. Could I have a motion?
I'd move, Your Honor. Second, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion that needs to be had? All good, counsel? Okay?
An, an ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to authorize the sale of city property, to provide the terms of sale and authorize the mayor to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed to the property, to provide for remonstrance to said property as provided by law, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Councilmember Muiran abstaining, councilmember Moaning absent, Ordinance 5378 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules regarding Ordinance Number 5378, and pass on second and third. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Councilmember Muiran abstaining, councilmember Moaning absent, Ordinance 5378 carries on second and third readings.
Okay. And last but not least, it's consideration of approval of the memorandum of understanding between the City and the Norfolk Housing Development Corporation, providing for development of property in the 700-800 block of Oak Street, and that NHDC is purchasing from the City in accordance with their responses to the, to their response to the city's request for proposal of this property.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none? Please vote.
All council, council members present voting in affirmative. Councilmember Muiran abstaining, councilmember Moaning absent, motion carries.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Last but not least, an administrative report here tonight. We have Chief of Police Meisner here, who's going to give us the 2015 Police Division Activity Report.
Good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. On behalf of the men and women of the Norfolk Police Division, I present to you the 2015 Activity Report for the Police Division. The report that I submitted to the, with the agenda, basically breaks down our calls for service into three specific areas: crime-related, traffic-related, and service-related. In the crime-related section, there wasn't really a lot of change from 2014. I think we had 10, 10 fewer criminal calls for service that we received. I think we had about eight additional criminal arrests, so that's relatively the same. We ended up with 2,887 criminal calls for service and 1,733 criminal arrests that were made by officers. In the alcohol arrest area, we have that separated out, we saw a decline of about 22% in alcohol-related arrests, and that includes MIP arrests, DWI arrests, and, and other associated arrests. In the juvenile area, we break out juveniles just to see what kind of activity we're having there, we saw about a nine, a little over 9% reduction in the number of arrests that were made for juveniles, and that's age 17 and under, which we always like to see. That's an area we don't like to see going up. In the traffic area, we saw a significant increase in the number of traffic-related calls for service. We had about a, almost a 15 and a half percent increase over 2014. The majority of the increase can be attributed to parking violations. Those are both complaints that were received, as well as on-view violations observed by officers who would make a call for service when they issued the parking citation. We saw an overall reduction of almost 3% in traffic collisions within the city. As far as traffic enforcement goes, we saw a significant increase in traffic-related enforcement, about almost 17 and 3/4% increase. And that was across the board. There was traffic violations, there was traffic warnings, parking citations, parking warnings, vehicle equipment defect cards. Those were all areas of increase. I, I think now would be a good time to, to again, thank you for the addition of the two officers a little over a year ago. We're beginning to see the fruits of that. Right now, the, all four patrol shifts are fully staffed, with seven officers on each shift. There's no trouble in them being able to take time off, take a vacation leave, and as you can see, productivity certainly has increased over the last year. So again, I want to thank you on, on their behalf. They certainly are appreciating those two extra officers there. At the bottom, you will see where it says "Service Requests." We saw an increase of a little over 3 and 1/2% in the total number of service-related calls for service. Those are just, a lot of them are miscellaneous calls. We did see some reductions in the areas of death investigations, emergency committals, in missing persons, animal calls. Those were, were all decreases, but we also saw some increases in some other areas, such as assist other agencies, and recovered property, suspicious persons, or suspicious vehicles. Overall, counting all calls for service, we had about a 4.4% increase in total number of calls for service. That came to 20,309 calls for service across the board. As far as total enforcement, taking in criminal and traffic-related matters, we had about an 11.8% increase in total enforcement contacts, or total of 11,368 citations, physical arrests, or warnings and defects. And that pretty much sums up the activity for the last year. I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Chief, thank you. Looks like everything, got good control on what's going on down there, so appreciate your coming before us. This is interesting information. I think it kind of keeps us, gives us a little better knowledge of what it is that really goes down there. That's a heck of a lot of calls when you look at it in that sense, but certainly, the percentage is encouraging, I think, you know?
I, I think so.
Somewhat, I mean.
It is. We'd like to see some of those numbers going down.
Absolutely.
But I guess people being people, we'll just have to keep working at it.
You know, I'm going to take this opportunity while you're standing there before you two, to, we're looking for some great weather in the next days, but we still have some sidewalks out there, folks that are not mo, uh, mowed, are not yet cleared, and some of them are standing pretty tall. So I encourage you, because I know our officers do not like to stop and give tickets for sidewalks where the snow is not yet removed, and if I understand correctly, it sure could happen.
It can happen. As a matter of fact, we would encourage anyone who, who has an issue, particularly if they are pedestrians and they're finding it difficult to, to walk, because certain sidewalks are not being scooped, we would encourage you to call the Police Division, report them to us. We will go out and we will make a contact with those individuals, and we will give them usually 24 hours to get that sidewalk cleared. If it's not cleared within that time, then we'll be coming back, we'll give them a citation. We have not had to do this yet, but we also will arrange to have it cleaned off for them, and they'll get a bill for that as well. So if they'll just, my personal experience has been, if you do it right away, the snow seems to be a little softer, a little easier to move out. If you wait a week, 10 days, it gets to be extremely difficult to try to get it off. So we encourage everybody to try to do it right away.
I appreciate that. And again, like I say, it's, it's going to be nice, people are going to get back out there and start walking, so I suggest that everybody get out there with their shovels and get it done. So seeing nothing else on the agenda?
One second. Have a question.
I'm sorry?
Oh, wait.
Oh, okay. The boys are down here talking, I'm sorry.
I said, with the parking violations being up almost 60%, was, is there an area of town you're noticing that people are, is it downtown, or is it just all across the board? I mean, is there something we could be talking about to help the citizens so they can park properly, or?
Well, I think.
You know, is it just, that's just a few questions.
Primarily, it's going to be in the downtown, is, the night shift checks the downtown every night, looking for, for violations downtown. Pretty much across the board, we're seeing parking violations. A lot of times, if someone makes a complaint as far as an abandoned vehicle, the officers will go out, they'll check it, they'll mark the tires, they'll put it in the tickler file, we'll be back in seven days to check the vehicle. If it's not there, we'll go ahead and tow it. A lot of times, you may see vehicles parked left side to curb, which again is a violation. And so it, it just depends on, on. And so it, it just depends on, on whether it's a complaint, or having a full shift, you have officers who are not completely tied down in calls for service and follow-ups and that. They have a little more time to patrol, which means they have a little more time to observe violations, and can take that self-initiated action rather than just waiting for the complaint to come in. But it's pretty much all over the town.
Chief, on your alcohol arrests went down substantially, it looks like.
Our what?
Your alcohol arrests.
Yes, they are down.
Yeah, went down substantially. Do you track that by age group, perchance? I noticed there's, there's MIPS in there.
Yes, sir.
So if you take those out and take the rest of them, are those ever broken down by age group?
You know, we never have broken those down by age groups, but we certainly have the ability to do that.
The other thing I, I'll just mention, and quick math says that the Police Division gets 1.7 calls an hour, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. You guys are busy.
Well, we, we do seem to stay a little bit busy. And I guess that's job security. But we, like I say, we would not mind it if people wouldn't be overly concerned about that.
Secure your job as much as they are?
Yes, that is true. Thank you.
Can I ask, as we were sitting here conversing a little bit, when we have snow occurrences and snow emergencies in place, tickets for that, does that go under the parking violation?
That goes under parking violations. We've talked it over with the staff, and I've asked them to now break it down, so that we actually will track snow emergency violations, as opposed to make that a separate listing, so that we'll be able to see from year to year how many actual snow emergency violations we have, and can track that, as, as opposed to just combining it all with all parking violations.
Good. Okay, answered my question. All right, anything else? All right, then we are adjourned.